What?
It's not coming through.
What is it?
The camera. Cause it says city. Who was working earlier? All I did was go out. I just went live, that's all I did. Can they move?
Turn video. Then my last. Admet Travis.
I've never done that.
Will you rise to the flag please, bring your hats? Chad, would you lead us on the flag please?
Aye. Plead the least.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, religious fans. One nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any question.
Thank you, Chad. Yeah, enter the motion, take the consent agenda, please.
Thank you for the motion.
Do you want to read the motion? Do I hear a second? Eric, second it. All of the papers say aye please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, armor reports. Public works. I see your paper. Can you come over and just answer any questions? Your papers and your brochures, you guys got?
Yes, I appreciate it.
My mic can't get up.
Yep, got it.
Okay, we're gonna go here front and center, just in case you have questions to ask. Now is the time to ask.
My mic is on.
Your mic is on. Okay, we're getting off at a good start. Any questions? Come on, Shelley, I'm gonna go first.
Stop it.
Well, I do have a few, but I can wait for them because it's later on, we can talk about, we're talking about the wall business.
Okay. I have nothing. There you go. You're okay?
I'm good.
Your mic's on.
I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for putting that on there.
Oh, no, you're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Alright, next is, please chief Sam Badger.
Well, you got your sheet for those spots?
Yeah.
Obviously, it's been a little bit, but most parts are just standard minor calls. And the county map went on a few times, another map, Logan's kinda swapped his shift around to any combat. Probably, uh, I'm glad instead of running around. So.
Please catch the mic, Brian.
That is a little working.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? No questions? Thanks, chief. Devin? Her sheet's also in her pocket. Wanna read her report? Devin, you don't have to go on, don't need to sit right there. Well, you got your mic on.
Sure.
Any questions for Devin?
Yeah, I have a question, of course.
Go ahead.
Well, I was reading in a report that you had said you checked with Secretary about the.
Secretary of State.
There we go, yes, 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 yes. No, no.
It still says delinquent. So they haven't renewed their stuff.
Okay. I just wanted to double check that that was correct how I read that.
Yep.
And then you also talked about underplanning, well, by the way. About the, about the application for Calis Meadows. One of the things in discussing with Todd about our timelines for getting, for getting back to people and approving things are historically short. Because we don't really have any building.
Yeah.
Like what's coming up, I couldn't imagine having to get through a hundred, a hundred house subdivision in fourteen days. So maybe that's something that we need to consider making changes to. And probably we can help Todd help us figure out what a more reasonable time is. I'm not, I'm not looking to slow play anything.
Yeah.
Things correct.
Yeah, most, I think most.
Any other questions, Devin? Jill is not here?
Nope.
Can you answer on her behalf?
I can try.
Okay, is there any questions for the, for Jill that's not here? That they will find answer? Nothing? Okay. Public hearing, special presentation, public comments on, public comments on the agenda items. Any public comment? Wait till we get right into. Get right in, okay. Who does this, is appointments? In the city of Cleveland, twenty twenty-two appointments, city commission and committees. So you're, well, my orange paper. And some of the planned growth committee. I chose these people, including myself, to be on that. That's the only correction or addition we have to our city appointments. So we need to have a motion to accept that. I'll entertain a motion from somebody. And second please. Go ahead.
Yeah.
She did.
She did. And second?
I'll second that.
Do you second it? Okay, we're moving second. Any other quick questions or comments on the choices? Then let's vote on, all of the bear please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One down, seven more to go.
Steve, you're on the plan, bro. Thank you.
Okay, number two is liquor license and visions later.
So the special occasion licenses, that's not check one, that's all for them. So the, so, so on premises.
For the liquor license?
Okay, I make a motion when we accept the, the liquor license, the liquor license or to the vision or.
Revision blue?
Revision three, that's it.
Do you hear a second?
I second that.
Okay, so now it's for all four? See, that would as far as, so there, it wasn't one of them, it wasn't a check one? This didn't feel very filled out, so, or this is. I don't know what I'm asking.
Yes.
So they're asking for all four of those?
If nothing is.
Are they supposed to be checked or is that a list?
Nothing's checked.
It kinda looks like a checkbox.
It's not the only one that wasn't very well filled out, I didn't think.
Yeah.
And I don't think that they sell, I don't think they share the answer to that. I don't think that they sell unopened containers to take away for consumption. It's usually just by the glass, right?
They do it by the glass and then they sell bottle, unopened bottles there that you can take with you.
So they do, so to go.
Yeah, so they do something, yeah. So, okay, I didn't know that.
I'm gonna assume that that's for all, that's a, that's a board list, not a checkbox list. And Toledo Event Center, is that also known as? Or is it second?
Okay, so motion for, very, very, very.
Me?
Yeah, what's your name? Sorry.
Hey, that's already been called worse, move on.
Shelley, I got two Shelly's. No, sorry.
Oh, you can call me Michelle.
Are you, no, no.
Well, then I don't know how else to help you.
Piranha, or you know that, alright?
I do know. I don't know how else to help you then. I guess call me Shelley.
Shelley one or Shelley two?
And we'll just go with it. You can call me Mrs. Thomas.
Teacher, teacher. Anyway, it's been moved in second by the teacher, Mrs. Thomas. Uh, all of the favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, special event application, Pluto Thursday Market.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this special event application. For Toledo Thursday Market.
Do I hear a second? Somebody?
I'll second it. And it starts May twenty-sixth and runs through October.
Yeah.
Covers those, those space.
I'll second that.
Okay, the movement's second.
So now go.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
I, this, this, this really felt to me like there was a lot of empty, unthoughtful. And there's like, it didn't, it feels like they just filled out the top part and there's no more information given for a while.
She brought in her.
Did she bring?
Yeah, the completed one, is that for me?
Okay.
And we were mainly looking for the garbage.
Uh-huh.
Security, insurance.
Security.
And I was looking for garbage and sharing.
Yeah, and she got that too.
Oh, perfect, okay.
We start the second one, Mr.? The second, okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
You have to do that at the twenty.
Um, well, there's another great stat here I thought for it also. Always has the first statement they want to, I remember reading about that. Just out of safety and, you know. Oh gosh, I'm sorry.
Teacher, teacher. You're in trouble.
Thank you.
Speed reading. Sorry about this.
And while she's looking, Devin, I really appreciate the highlighted areas in this document. Uh, you know, yeah, and, and so the example on that, sorry, since we're reading that, that other ordinance change that we have. It would've been great if the changes.
I thought about that afterwards, yeah.
So.
Cause we just got that, we upgraded the Adobe to where you can edit PDFs now.
Yeah, that's really mindful.
Thanks, cool.
Thank you.
Makes it a lot easier.
So when you say Adobe, it's not referring to me?
No, your paper, it don't count.
Okay, back to the motion, back to the second, by Mrs. Thomas.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Then let's vote on it. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, winter engineering, private five sidewalk project. So we have.
Travis, well, Travis was on Zoom, but he's gone now.
He's gone? Okay, so it's a hundred percent more expensive.
Yeah.
Do we have money?
What my issue is, by reading this, is they made two corrections. Number nine, which was now nine eight. The increase in crushed service rock went from ninety dollars a ton to a hundred twenty ton. Okay, the value of that went from four thousand five hundred to nine thousand, doubled it.
Yeah, the whole thing's on that.
Okay, number nineteen, and nineteen eight segmented concrete block wall for six hundred seventy quantity units. For sixty dollars, it's turned to forty thousand. They want to now put a cast in place, concrete wall. Seventy-seven cubic yards at fifteen hundred dollars a yard comes to a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred. I do not like that increase. So our contract that we just got, and now we have to resubmit, went from a hundred eighty thousand to three hundred and twelve thousand, which is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars more. My biggest cost was the concrete.
And they're in the business of doing that, so they probably should've known that was not happy brought into it, right?
Yes, yes, was, I would've wanted to. What I would like to propose is that they give us an itemized state with a hundred fifteen thousand in the concrete, what it costs a lot. I'm sure it's prevailing wage, I'm sure it's a few other things, but for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars more, we just cannot afford to do this with the state. In my concerns. Any comments or questions?
Well, I, I do know, I mean. Concrete and gravel and all that has gone up.
I'll tell you what it is right now, dude. A hundred yard, a hundred dollars per yard of concrete delivered. I just found out from a truck driver that delivers. And I talked to my sister's husband, my brother-in-law, he is working on a high-rise in Seattle. And they're paying a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five a yard.
So we're all in fifteen hundred dollars a yard, is that what they're quoting?
That's fifteen hundred dollars a yard, cubic yard.
Is that including the labor and form setup and stuff?
I, I don't know that, I don't have an itemized.
Okay, but now.
That's why I'm asking for that, aye. Cause that's the biggest expense on the whole contract, the concrete.
And how are we paying for this? We got, we got a grant.
We got a grant for it. Mike, where's your grant? How much did you grant?
TIB covered the grant that the official was applying for.
Was that the hundred eighty thousand?
Yeah, so, and I might add that that bid of the application was put in a year ago. And since then, we've changed engineers. So there was a couple of things there that went on that was unexpected, so now we just need to be prepared. Go through the motions and get it nailed down.
Well, we'll have to resubmit it, correct?
It'll have to be resubmitted. So it, it may not even go through, it may get denied now, I don't know.
Well, okay. Anyway.
They have three recommendations on the second page that they want answers on.
Three recommendations?
Yeah. On developing a letter to TIB requesting additional funds. And then a letter to TIB asking for an extension, because we're on a timeline for it.
Okay.
And then. The third one.
And those are about the sign, yeah.
Well, I think they have a fourth of that, I don't know, that concrete. So what do you want, do you want to try and?
Do you guys wanna go forward with these? Cause they're gonna have to have answers on it, especially for the TIB one, to get an extension for the money that we already have.
Can, can we get that extension, Mike?
Uh, we try. There's no guarantee, but if they put in for, uh, the, the circumstances that we run up against, it may get granted, I don't know. Um, I had talked to Chris, uh, from TIB and he's kind of doubtful, so.
Well, could, could we, is there a safety factor or also, Devin, or not, mentioned?
That, I don't know. I'm not familiar with it.
Well, okay, I, maybe another addition to this, to ask your question, is when a big windstorm comes up and blows those trees, which is gonna blow up, blow out that sidewalk, it's gonna blow out that wall, it's gonna blow out everything. And then what are they gonna do with the traffic, running through the bar back streets? Trying to get him out here? I don't think so, especially truck drivers. So, could we put like a safety thing in our question also? Or not? Don't worry about that. Don't worry about since I mentioned.
Yeah.
Hey, council, what do you wanna try and go forward to this? What are you thinking?
I think we need to get the extension.
Sure.
Wanna try it? Round two? We had, we had the hundred eighty thousand, yes.
No, I mean, these people haven't, they already received some money, I thought it's all checked, go through on them.
Devin, they may have paid many hours.
That's a joke question.
That's a joke question. Okay, we don't know what answers. So yeah, what are you guys gonna do? You wanna try and go keep going on this one?
Well, it can go through right now and.
No, we don't agree with it.
We can, right.
We don't agree with it.
So, just to talk around, back to.
I would. It says that they've been reasonable and allowing for extensions. I would apply for the, I would do, try to get the extension and then also. It, it also stated somewhere in here that there was a, oh, what did it say? Something about additional funding, right?
So, that's the number one recommendation, under the recommendations.
Yes, but it's somewhere.
Additional design.
So his initial pricing seems low. Unfortunately, smaller projects only result in higher prices, freeze and incremental work. The state was seeing cost escalate, no kidding. I'm saying construction higher price due to our economy, it's gonna raise twenty-five to thirty-five percent, just this spring, point two.
But then it says the state received additional funding from the government.
No.
What?
It does. We don't have that.
No, I know, state. The state had received additional funding from the federal government and it's a good time to request additional funding for the project.
Okay.
So it says that in there, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
So I think we should do all of those things.
I agree.
And with the other ones.
Yes.
Yes.
Wanna make a formal motion?
The sad thing is that.
We need emotions authority, okay, we need a motion.
The sad thing is that it's just gonna continue.
Going up.
To go up and we're gonna be playing this game of trying to catch up and hit the right spot where we get enough money and.
If we make our request, we can make a request this for a dollar amount, this.
Projected.
Projected, given, given projected costs.
We can, we can kinda do that right here, what we got for an estimate, they said twenty-five to thirty-five percent increase.
So it's probably gonna be thirty-five.
It's like what I found out on the water sewer lines, it's ten, ten percent to fifteen percent, just in the materials. Going up next year, so you're looking at eighty, eight hundred and eighty thousand to one point two million for materials next year for the pipeline. And we don't even have it. Anyway. We need a motion.
Oh, well, I guess we do, yeah. Um, so I would make the motion that we continue forward with, um, doing all of the, um, recommendations that we request for the, the extension. And, um, we ask for the itemized list so that we can see how that's all broken down and, um, that we also request the additional funding and think about how we're gonna project that. Think about that thirty-five percent, I mean, I don't know if you wanna project it forward at thirty-five percent, or if you wanna look at forty percent, I don't know.
You got what?
Well, I don't know what else I'm gonna say. I don't know.
Okay, we got, should we go, enjoy your second? As we move in second, any other discussion? Let's vote on it. All of the fair, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number five on the list. On-call engineering services, Grant Osborne. There was this, the one like they've always had for those?
Yeah, it's just after we're updating.
Updating, just an update. I'll entertain a motion and we'll discuss it.
Well, I'll make the motion that we accept the, um, planning services contract with, um, TRG planning, I don't know.
Grant.
Grant Osborne.
Um, Grant. Is there a second? Moving second, any more discussion? Just an update.
Yeah, I, no, I just saw that Gavin had said that they already changed it, it was the same, just rolling over the date, so.
Okay. That's some discussion, all of us vote on it, all of the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, amendment number one, contract, Grant Osborne, same thing.
Yep.
Devin, same thing in this one. I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we could accept this amendment number one.
Eric, read the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Shelley, second it. Any other discussion? No one's discussed, let's vote on it. All of the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, flying services contract, TRG planning. What? Say something.
Why do I have to?
Cause you're my clerk.
This is a new contract with, um, Todd Johnson, who Mike Johnson from G and O recommended for our, help us with planning and development, since people don't know a whole lot about it.
So yeah, couldn't say that better myself.
There you go.
There you go. And he's, was he gonna be here and?
He is right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
I did not know who you were. I do now.
Trying to get up and introduce myself.
Well, go ahead and stand up and introduce yourself. Then I'll know who you are too.
Good evening, I'm Todd Johnson, I'm the president, founder of TRG Planning. Um, I do mostly land use permitting work, um, I just review applications and do applications. I work whole for cities and private developers, so I'm well grounded in what, what makes development go, so I can kinda help cities to understand, um, to how to allow what they want to allow and work within their code to help to review those applications, so I can answer any questions they have.
They come highly recommended and I have to make a decision, sorry about not including the council on this one, to hire him immediately as we get him on board with all our stuff going on. Um, in the future, I'm gonna try and get stuff organized a little bit better, so I can come to the council before I make a hire, eh? But thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Um, so we've got him on board right now. We need, we need a motion to.
I made a motion that we.
See you later.
Yeah.
I second.
The movement, Eric, read the motion, Kathy second it, and move the second, any other discussion?
I, I was in the meeting when we met with Todd, and that's why I'm so quickly to make that motion, you know, he's fantastic.
Okay.
What I've seen, I'm really excited to have him on board.
Okay, well noted. Let's go, let's roll on. Let's roll on, all of the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number eight, I request final statement, free application. Okay, number eight, I request final state health brief application. Files zero, got it. And keep the guy on the line. Let's, let's just go with your concerns. Go ahead and stand up, please.
Well, I, I met Todd today too and I think he can be a big help to get me through the process that before he was here, Michelle was the one kinda leading me through the whole process. I think you've been out there and Mike's been out there. You guys knew all along kinda what my plan was, what I was trying to do.
Mm-hmm.
I purchased this property from you guys and I've been doing, working on this for over a year now. Spent quite a bit of money. And um, so when it dead end or when it didn't go through, I was kinda shocked. And so now I'm trying to figure out why it didn't go through and why you have to make it go through and so just talking to him just for a few minutes today, it sounds like the storm drain or creek or whatever it gets classified, we gotta get that clarification for him.
Those, have you looked at it, Todd?
I have, Mr. Mayor.
Have you seen, cause some of the language says drainage and some language says creek. Do we have, I don't know what it is. I mean.
I've been told all along from Michelle that I was a storm. It's what I wrote on all my paperwork, applied for everything.
Okay.
Um, I don't, it it leads into a kind of a swampy area, so I don't think it's a oh, creek, but I don't know. I, I mean, I was wrong here because I've been led down this road for a long time thinking I was done and I'm not done. It's gonna go on.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, the staff concerns for reviewing that, that application were that it does appear on a county map as, as a mapped water stream, um, but it doesn't seem to have any county mapping information. So I, I would be happy to work with the outlet and see if we can resolve what it, what it is and what it's classified as and why the county has it on their map and and to see what additional information the city has. If it's already been determined to be a drainage ditch, then, then that's what it is. Um, but the concern was noted because it shows up in the county map.
What would be the big difference of a, was a creek or was a drainage ditch? I know creeks would be running water here around and I'm sure it's fed by springs off by the hillside. Is there just a huge difference between a creek for the footage wise of staying away from the creek? Or is it the footage wise for the drainage ditch? I don't know the difference. I know on streams and creeks, you gotta stay about seventy five feet away from the creek on both sides, so there's a hundred fifty feet.
Which involves nearly that entire plot on both sides.
Yes, so I don't think it's a creek. I think it's a drainage ditch, but.
It's a creek right now. I was just out there. It's, it's.
So it's raging. So in to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, it's not, um, it's not a difference of width or flow. There, they have some intermittent streams that only flow certain times of the year and don't flow water in other times.
Yep.
Um, and then they have others that are, are shorelines which flow a big volume of water, which you also have regulations for. Um, the difference between what those are is how they're regulated. Because a buffer of seventy five feet that goes off of anything that's classified as a stream, so it just has to meet technical requirements for being a stream. Usually, um, usually those are, are not manmade or, or they're they don't exhibit the qualities. They don't, they don't have weather vegetation. They don't have anything um natural looking about them. They're very constructed. Uh, so usually what happens is when it shows up on a map, you can get a letter from biologist, um, higher biologist who often look at it and say, yes, this doesn't need it. It's not biologically extreme. It doesn't function. It is just the drainage ditch that's overgrown, needs to be maintained. Um, or they say, yes, it is a stream, but based on that, here's what you can do in that seventy five foot buffer. Maybe it's orange buffer depending on what type. So there's a, a different set of rules that apply whether it's a stream or a drainage ditch.
Yeah.
Um, but if the city has already made a determination, um, that, that has, has been published someplace, then we can just rely on that as well, not require additional information. So I just need to spend a little bit more time, I think, working with the rest of your staff to figure out if the city has something that's already been done or kind of work with the applicant and figure out this is what it means to go forward.
Yeah, I was under the impression now Toledo has their own rules. They're not, they're not governed by the county. They have their own policies. And I went to an engineer before I even started all this process and talked to them about it. And they gave me this long wondered list of what I would expect to do and I was like, not gonna do it. I'm not gonna even attempt this. And then when he realized that was in Toledo, he goes, well, you don't have to do this because Toledo has their own set of rules. They can do. And I'm not saying I wanna do something that's wrong.
I know.
But you guys are covering yourselves on, on, on uh this sort of thing. And that's what I was led to believe from Michelle for the whole time she was here helping me go through this process.
Right.
And you've been out there and knowing Mike's been out there and I didn't feel like there was anything we were trying to do that was.
Well, I agree, I agree that I didn't, I didn't do it trying to steer it from reading anything wrong, but anyway.
So, so my concern is, so I need to look at taking care of you because you're a landowner in the city and so I, you know, kind of represent you, but I also represent the two future homeowners, if you build those homes on, on that edge of, of what's, what's fairly steep. And I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how you get two houses there and, and supply. Well, you know what? Okay, I mean, you're right. It, it, it's not ideal, but and I went back and forth whether I wanted to like break it in half. But I'm telling, I wish Michelle was here because she's the one kinda pushing the whole thing. She's the one that told me the way you can do four thousand square plus, blah, blah, blah. And I went back and I talked to realtors and I talked to people I know and they all said if you can make two lots of it, make them do it. They, that's what everybody's consensus was. And I'm like, okay, I got the opportunity to do, whether I build on there or not. I just, I did it, but it was probably, it sounds like it's wrong. You know what I mean? It sounds like I'm wrong to do that. I, I don't know.
I, I don't think that you're wrong to do that. I think that makes sense. Also, I think the concern for me though is we really, I don't believe and maybe I'm wrong, that we make our own rules because we're still held accountable to just like you would be held accountable to, um, you know, ecology and fish and wildlife and so if that is going wherever it's going, it has to go somewhere, right?
Mm-hmm.
So i- if we, if we allow, if we don't make sure this is right, everybody's gonna be on the wrong side of it.
That's great. I wish this one came up a year and a half ago. I'm into this. A lot of money, a lot of time, everything the city's asked me to do.
I get it.
Down to a T and so we're in this thing deep now and here we are. We, I feel like I've just started all over. You know, I spent a lot of money, a lot of money. You guys received a lot of it. So a lot of it went to the guy that was writing the lines and the survey and all that. I had to get the easel straightened out. That's what, I had to hire a lawyer. I had to go through that process because I wasn't dealing with a homeowner. I was dealing with an estate, which is another.
Yeah.
Um, so this, so yeah, I wanna get this resolved without pumping any more money out, how, what time involved, you know, I, I would love to.
I get that. I totally get that. And I feel, I feel for you truly, I do, but don't you also wanna make sure that it's like
Right.
Not, yeah, I mean, you don't wanna end up putting any more into it and then finding out now that's, this is bad. You know what I mean? It'd be better just to know what the heck it is so we can calm it forward.
Sure.
I think we probably should do that and I don't know. I'm just gonna say this. I don't, I mean, Michelle may have said it was this, but it doesn't sound like anybody can find anything that states exactly what it was, so.
The storm drain?
Yes, the storm drain.
Sure.
So if it's a creek, can you help us on this one?
I, I can help. Um, okay. I would, I would suggest that the, the easier way unfortunately would be to get a letter from some of, some biologist or something that says what category of that is, what the classification is. Um, we can look, the city does have their own separate set of, of critical areas rules that you all have adopted, but they are compliant with the state and federal regulations. So you've adopted those under that umbrella, but you do have your own rules and working within those rules, maybe we can find a way to, to try and make some of this a little bit easier. But if you don't deal with it when you do the plat, then the homeowner would have to deal with it when they bought a lot and did a COVID permit. So you, you'd be basically passing it down the road to the next person who's in line for, for that law and.
And we have to be cognizant of how we take your time because you're supposed to pass through cost to the builder. So this.
Well, I give issue as well. I, I, I am happy to help, but yes, I do keep on with the cost as well, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Am I right? Whether it's dealt with now or whether it's passed to the person that's buying.
But if, if the city did wanna pass this down, then a solution might be to uh to condition the plat that the homeowners would have to deal with it. Basically, what you do and then there'd be a note on the plat that would record with that. That doesn't get rid of the problem. It just makes it somebody else's problem. Um, it doesn't, doesn't quantify if there is a problem or not a problem. It just says this has to be dealt with at time, but it may result in, um it may result in an unbillable lot getting created if it's not something that can be dealt because of the.
And that's what we're trying to avoid.
So the, the better thing to do would probably be to deal with it now than later so that you avoid creating that a lot.
But the number one issue is either a creek or a drainage ditch. That seems to be the issue.
Well, that's, that's the most obvious issue. The second issue is, as I said, I'm really not sure what your billable envelope is on lot one. And I'm not really sure how you get back there. I understand that there's talk of the uh ingress and egress going.
Yeah, so there would be a road going across the culvert, just along the property line and along the hill to the second lot is where.
From Hemlock. No, I'm sorry. I'm talking about how you actually get back to those two lots.
Oh, it's the alleyway from St. Not Hem, it could be Hemlock.
From Hem, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you've got, you've got ditch on St. Helens. So you can't come in that way.
Did you tell Mike and I that you was gonna come along?
Yeah, yeah, there's a uh twelve foot alley and I actually got more footage from a homeowner that lives there, so I got a wider spot.
Yeah, me, me sent her driveway from my brother.
Yeah. More of it, yeah.
That's where I remember.
So is it from the top side?
Can I show you?
Sure, I have your, I have your map here. What I was concerned with is it's this, this is not great. Yeah, it's coming in here. Okay, so that from, from Hemlock to the, to the property is twelve feet wide with with cliff on one side, but with, you know, an eight to ten foot drop down to this waterway.
Well, they gave me another five feet.
But this, this stream, this, this stream that runs along here, across here, you've got a large tree right there and a large tree right there and a gas line right there. So it's, it's, do you have a relationship with this?
Well, it's, you have to have that, writing on that.
And, and if you, if this were ever, we call it every day.
Sure.
I don't think this is our alley, right?
No, it's mine.
Right, so keep using this for every probably reasonable.
Yeah, but honestly, I'd rather use this. Then you're not bothered, you're not.
This is right by this.
This is what Michelle and everybody looked at with me when we were going. Because that is the alley to the.
I think that alley is a very nice way. An alley is a nice way to put, it's, it's kind of.
It looked on the aerial footage.
The water, so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to seal up the one side.
So when you're improving a plat, you also have public access and safety concerns because you wanna make sure that way you're improving that they can get a fire vehicle back there.
Exactly.
Um, so usually there's an all foot, all weather surface that's required as part of your planning. Come in, in your case, you actually require that lots have direct access or reserved by a flag, which is another it, to me, that was more of an administrative challenge than the, than the, is a, is a stream or a ditch. Um, the administrative challenge, I think you could, you could work through as long as you need to demonstrate, provide state.
I say that, right.
Then your public works, people could probably look at that and say that's a safe being an access for fire vehicles and variants not required on a flat lot. Um, a lot of easements and such. So I think that there are a number of concerns that I actually did um put together and draft a memo that I can use the certification now. Um, public works and, and maybe your consulting engineer look at some of this. I, I drafted a memo of what I had found.
So were you not part of the application when I bought? I, I'm sitting in the audience. Well, I wasn't sure where I was, so.
Those were just Vegas. I think there really was no talk of what was planned.
Well, part of it was, I was just thinking that. Okay, so one was so I could have real feel again and the other was so. So it was all about that, you know, every bit. It had nothing more. I mean, who would buy, pay five thousand dollars for what, what ground?
Just, just, you know, as a, as a, as a normal person, but you're.
I paced that stuff at like fifty feet.
That's the skinniest part.
Right, I paced up the skinniest part. Take twelve from that. So. Well, actually what I'm gonna do is the hillside needs to be a little bit cleaned up, so I'm gonna gain a little bit of ground there. Well, honestly, I'm here to negotiate that with one, maybe make it one lot selling two, you know what I mean? If we did.
Can you go into the frame?
Oh, I don't think. I don't wanna go way into it because I don't wanna create an iteration problem. I wanna clean the dishes there. Some of the sloughed off, I'm just gonna clean it up. It'll gain me some ground.
So basically what I see here is that this is done and this stuff is done and it should be.
Then it can move forward, that's correct. Nice. But there are a couple of procedural things in there that I could work out. So the biggest concern is are you actually allowed to build anything here at all because of that is an issue for free?
And safely built. This is steep all the way, I mean, all the way around the, the, you've got, you've got the nice ground, very uh erosion hazard all the way around it. Um, a little bit.
This, this part, but I can hear it's pretty.
Right, but I'm just saying the G I S has this whole thing marked as as higher erosion, so that would make me, and you're on an edge here, which is fairly steep. I would wanna note that the house you build there for our future resident doesn't have to come on that thing.
Oh, yeah.
So, so they have, they do have that entire area mapped in the county map. Did you actually knew that critical areas for geo hazard that often will be seen as well? So you have regulations that's deep threat.
Right.
Um, but it's just right now the application doesn't address any other than, other than these conversations. So there has to be something in the file that if staff changes or somebody goes away, that there has to be something documented in the file that shows here's how we got there. Now we go, this is what we did.
Well, I had talked to the county a few days ago because I heard my. My name is Steve. And, and like you said, we're, we're trying to make this work as much as we can without giving ourselves any trouble. And I talked to the county uh environmental guide and uh he did say that on their K I S they have it as a stream and non, non fish bearing seasonal stream. Um, but he also indicated that there was some room for the city and the cities had the ability to reduce the amount of buffer required and offer mitigation as an alternative and.
Did they also mention something about a boundary line we can, we can move to, to the city or am I mistaken on that one?
Well, I, I don't recall that conversation, but they were talking about a uh, a six to one mitigation and if, the thing is, you'd have to try to find out where on that lot you could mitigate.
Well, the law's actually pretty big.
And I'm thinking if you were talking about doing a single lot, you would have, have room to mitigate.
Right.
Whereas you might not.
If I'm willing to do that, that makes it easy for everybody. Um, because I know second lot is a, it's a skinny lot. It's small. It's, it's not very big. But that whole lot is probably twelve, fourteen thousand square feet if you add it all up because it, a lot of it's up and down.
Yeah, our, you know, one of our concerns when we were talking about that was the issue of the hillside above you and how to mitigate the erosion problems that you're gonna have on, on, when it gets saturated. And uh, how you deal with any flow that comes from that.
Um, well, there is a, there is a ditch right now on the base of that hill.
Yeah.
Have you talked to any someone else in your yourself?
A little bit. I, he didn't.
A little bit, I didn't look at it, I just told him. With regards to the stability of that spoken, where it's likely might be and.
It's pretty stop, pretty soggy.
It's gonna get soggy, but I mean, you just want to make sure you're not in a situation where you're sitting in a libel soil on a hardpan plane and as soon as it gets saturated enough. It slips. And. But but I think from the the county standpoint, there's some room for the city to. Uh, mitigate the buffers somewhat, you know, as much as you feel is is safe to do so. And. I I'd be happy to make a phone call back to them and and get get some definitive information with regards to that.
That sounds like a great idea to me.
Well, I I should take a look at your code too. I did not look at it with a weapon.
Okay.
But I can look at what your code says.
It's even better, the more eyes we look at this, the better, best we can get something resolved for him to start keep going ahead with his project.
But the the big question is too, so if the county has made a determination that it's non fish bearing and it's only a seasonal. Then now we can look at what you're.
Everybody hear that?
Are you fine?
Pardon me? Why buying what? Of course, I always buy the beer. Get through this thing.
We'll be on the notes, right? It'll be on the minutes.
And then to go back to number. Four.
Number four.
Travis.
Okay.
Answer your questions.
Travis, can you hear us?
I I can hear you, mayor.
Okay. I have a question, there's two corrections that you have. For the engineer cost estimates sheet. There's number nine and ninety. I'm kind of okay with that one, but I'm not okay with number nineteen and nineteen eighty, I don't know why. The cost of concrete is fifteen hundred dollars a cubic foot or cubic yard. And it's gonna take seventy seven yards to do three hundred feet of curving. Can I get an itemized statement for you guys on that, or can you explain it to me right now?
Um, yeah, I can't explain it to you right now. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that's just an. An estimate based on the cost for including the forming and everything since it's a. The concrete itself wouldn't be nearly that much.
Because the original estimate was a hundred eighty thousand and with the new estimate, it's three hundred and twelve thousand. That's thirty nine, thirty two thousand more than what we planned for.
Yeah.
And I'm sure our grant has gone out the window because of that.
Yeah, the state felt like the grant didn't have enough money to cover all of the. Things they would require, so they requested that we do a new estimate and then try to get. Uh, help you guys get more money um for the for the project. We we can tighten up that that estimate if you want, if you think it'd be easier to get. Uh, less money. Um, but the the intent was to. Show to justify getting more money to show what the current cost estimate would be, the inflation.
I I know. Prevailing wage and all that's gonna play a factor and that's gonna be huge in the estimate. I just didn't understand that it's so much of a high increase. When I personally contacted the concrete guy today, advised truck and delivery, they were selling concrete hundred dollars a yard. Cubic yard. And I talked to a builder in Seattle that pumps concrete up to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen floors, he's paying a hundred twenty five dollars. Cubic yard. And I see this number of fifteen hundred. So it's coming into my brain.
Yeah, so the actual concrete might be a hundred dollars per yard, but to uh form it up. Um, to to build the forms for the retaining wall and. Uh, install it and stuff, then that that's where it ends up being a lot more than just the yards of concrete. There's not not actually that much concrete, but there's a lot of. Work setting it up, so we can take a tighter look at that, the mayor, and see if. Can can bring that number back down.
That's what I'm asking for, please, Travis, thank you.
You bet.
You guys have any questions for Travis? No questions? Those are the questions we have for now, Travis, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for getting on Zoom, thank you. Okay, moving on. Unfinished business, ordinance number seven, seven, five, water service service rate, second reading. Uh, let's vote on, let's put a motion, then we'll have, anyone have a question? Yes, motion it, and second, then we'll have a discussion. Okay.
My question that we approve.
Go here a second. Okay, it's been moved by Eric and second by Jamie. Orders are supposed to buy any more discussion?
You said you have a question.
Thank you. I didn't say. My question in in the part about the. You have it up on yours.
Yes.
Okay, at the very end. When it's talking about capital improvement.
Yes.
Thank you, it's not, yeah, not real clear. That that. Sixty eight dollars under sec- section.
Three, yes.
Agree. Is part of our of the already.
Oh, it 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 is.
It's part of.
It is, this this, and this is actually what I was talking with Devon about will be great is is if the changes were highlighted because. The change is a dollar. A one dollar per month for a household of this.
Okay.
Went from the capital improvement to. On like on the checkbook. To the expenditures.
To the expenditures, okay.
The 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 cost to our residents had zero.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense, but that's really not clear.
No, that is. Without seeing the difference dips that, you know, the changes.
That's what would be good.
Line out the change.
Exactly.
And I went through this whole thing, yeah, I went through this whole thing and and pulled all the numbers out. Put it into a spreadsheet and came up with a lower number because I walked up here and got to learn that that doesn't include tax, so there's. So that actually is what got about to the whole number, okay, that makes more sense.
Okay, that that does make more sense. Thank you, that answers my question.
Yeah, I almost found it.
And this is why.
Does he read first or do we vote?
Just read it by title.
Orders number seven, seven, five, and ordinance for the city of Cleveland, amending ordinance number. No, it's seven, five, two, see, you weren't following the previous, you were not following.
The previous one.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Oh, amending seven.
That's worth something, right?
Yeah, you got me.
Thank you, thank you. Number seven, seven, five, two, section four and section five and section eight point four point one. The city code of the city of Cleveland establishing rates for sewer services upon a bi-monthly basis and repealing ordinances in conflict. So be read. And the motion? We made the motion and we discussed it and I. Let's vote on it, all the fair play say aye. Both, motion carries, okay, back to my sheet. Other business. This is another thing I had to make at last minute because of the deadline. At will is. Gonna keep us out of fines and everything else if we get it completed before the twentieth, which is this week. And we had to do this. In a month?
Yeah.
Next month, the twentieth?
This month.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
This one.
The twentieth, you said the twentieth. End of this month.
Oh, the end of this month, I'm sorry. But we had to have.
Which is like two weeks.
Yeah, we're running out of time. And Jill was in panic mode. And she come to me and asked if we could hire Michelle. So at the last minute, I said yes, because we have to have this, and she figured out the hours, we'd be anywhere from thirty to forty hours to complete this. Thing, but they gotta have.
Annual report.
Annual report. And it's gotta be all the Ts crossed, all I thought it correctly, or we will. The final be horrendous and roughly the thirty to forty hours around two thousand dollars. That are correct.
I think that sounds right, yeah.
Right around two thousand dollars. Either that or we pay a huge fine, like, anyway, I don't want to go that route. Okay, so I made the decision to hire her to finish up this. Business so we can get done with it and be correct. So I entertain a motion. Kind of late, I'll entertain a motion to accept Shell to help us on this. And she's doing it on her own time. I mean, she's doing it off her work schedule, so she'll have time to try and help us at home or whatever. Quickly. Second. Who's in second? Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are you then gaining the knowledge to be able to do it next year? Somebody, yes, somebody is.
Okay. Let's vote on it, please, all those in pairs say aye. Opposed, thank you counsel, and once again, Paul Bush for doing that, but it had to be done quickly. Okay, a new one just came to my attention for other business. There's an RV camping request. Shelley, they can use stand up number two.
So we have RV campers as of right now at the camp. They're asking a request if they could stay more than the fourteen day period. Right now, they're paid through May twenty first. Um, their wish. They're asking if they could stay till May thirty first. Um, in that time period, they're looking at being applied for the park host. At this, they got all the the agreement and the maintenance list and they're going over it, so. Um, they're asking if they could stay over the fourteen day period, which is only five days added on to fourteen. So, does that make sense?
And as of right now, we have other campers coming in and no other income besides these people that are there.
As of right now.
As of right now.
Is there a reason we kept it fourteen days? Is there something?
Well, it was kind of back in the old days, we were able to stay for a long time.
You can stay fourteen days and then you have to be gone thirty, and then you can stay fourteen more.
But that's it.
But that's for a year.
Yeah, that's it. That's the rules, I made a long time ago.
And the council has done extensions that pass for. Because we've had um workers stay in the park and stay in our RVs, so they would they would pay monthly. They were there for like three months, they would pay monthly. To us to stay there and they allow that. It's just to keep people from squatting. Yeah.
So I figured. Just me and my goofy brain, I figured they're using leverage. You get the five days I was, by sound telling me that they want to be a park host. So now I can turn that back around and say, well, then in that case, you need to be our park host, if you're gonna send it five days, be safer for a long time. Just my brain, sorry. Um, but we have had people say that, like she said, the workers have worked at Walsons Farms down there, stayed there for a long time, it was over a year, wasn't it?
Now, it's only like three months.
Three months, that was a long time, and like the contract says, we're in part fourteen, three days off. Come back for another fourteen and that's it for twenty eight days for a whole year. But we can, you're you're the council, you can change it, do whatever you want. I figured this income is income. Nobody's there now. But that's your call.
I make motion we grant an additional five days of the normal rate.
Okay, we move to the second and then discussion. And questions. Let's vote on it, all the fair play say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Away, they've taken care of their public input. Any public input, yes.
What is the state doing? Down by Beasley's. Fixing the third lane. It's closed all next week, it was originally closed this week. Then they locked it back next week. From fifty nine to sixty. All right, I don't know. That would be my assumption that they're gonna take the ruts out of there, so someone, somebody's gonna die in those ruts.
I told truck driver, last year, I talked to the head engineer of the state at one of our mayor meetings. I told him, when you cross the Calis River Bridge and stay in the truck lane. If I had false teeth, it'd be out of my mouth on the floorboard by the time I got halfway up the hill, it was so bad, I mean, there was.
I had looked at their website, it does not have anything about that. But I don't know what they're doing, I assume that's what they're doing, there's a paving machine.
No, sometimes I gotta make a study on something, so about it, but they just drive it, they'll know.
Trailer and the paving machine down there behind those.
Okay, but when you get right up to the on off ramp.
Right.
It jitter bugs, it'll jitter bug you over a lane, I'm not kidding, and as a normal span, that's slowing down and breaking, it'll still jitter bug you trip across.
So they're closing the lane, that's that right hand lane.
Plus they could be doing a survey on that bridge. That's true, they would not have a favor stream.
The next question is, what are they doing about exit safety? Anything? I don't see it on there.
It's in the study.
What they, what are they studying?
They hit it, they damaged it, they need to replace it, just like they did on Thirteenth Street, every time they have to hit that before they finally replace it. They did that, so. It's a long process to stay.
Over here.
It's been a while, yeah. That's right, you've got the, what, sixteen million dollar budget? To do bridges or whatever needs to be fixed, yeah, anyway. I spoke my piece with them and they weren't, I wasn't happy. Hopefully, they got there, have you seen the paving machines, they're gonna do something.
I have mine.
Go ahead.
Um, so Shelby brought up the beginning of the council regarding the food bank.
Cause I wanted to bring that back up too.
So it'd be only good for the state, um, but it doesn't seem to be any action items coming out of that.
I'm glad you brought that back up because I wanted to take, I wanted to bring that back up.
So.
Well, they are in violation of.
They're in violation of their contract, and so now we need to figure out what we're gonna do about it. Can we send them a letter saying you're in violation of your contract, and this needs to be taken care of by this time, or this needs to happen? Cause it is a violation, and I don't think they have to have a whole lot of time if they aren't, I think it's just a. They were notified that they were in violation of their contract because. Um, I think that it went, you can look it up if you would be so kind, I think the letter that Michelle sent to them. Notified them that they were in violation of their contract, and that was in from the meeting that we had when um.
When they were here?
Yeah, when the bio sledge people were here. That's when we found out they were in, they were in violation, and so if that's helpful at all for looking for the, um, the letter, and I know she sent one, and I'm pretty sure that it notified them of that, and we never got a response back from that, I don't believe. And, um, so what, what do we do now? I mean, what is the council or the state? I don't believe the contract, I think the contract just states that we can terminate their lease. I don't think it even says we have to give them a certain amount of notice. This is just off the top of my head, I'm reading the contract.
Do you want to tell the agenda for next meeting and like a copy, because are you guys going to go through the contract again and change it since it was so old?
It has to be completely, right?
Yeah.
But that's before the end of February, you already gave them a notice that, that we're releasing, we're terminating the contract. I believe they gave them written notice.
At the end of this year.
Yes.
Yes, and that we wanted to re, uh, that we wanted to renegotiate that contract, or, so they know that, but they've not responded. What are we doing? I mean, that's just like a question, like, so what now? Can we send them a certified letter so that they sign for it? You, we know you're delinquent. This needs to be taken care of by this amount of time, and if it's not taking care of this amount of time, then this happens.
And, and while you're sending that certified letter, you might as well confirm that they know that the existing contract's been terminated. Effective by the end of the year.
We're not getting any response. So.
So could they just say, well, we're not going to say nothing until we get to the end of the year, when it's actually up?
Well, they kind of did that when the council tried to get rid of them last year, and it turned out that we didn't give them any of these notices, they get a statement here.
Oh, we have this time around.
Yes, we have.
Actually.
They're violation of the contract.
We don't have to give them any notice, we can just terminate the contract.
And what's the desired outcome?
The desired outcome is a functioning, I mean, the desired outcome for the, for the citizens would be a functioning system.
With the current.
But the, the.
With the current organization, or, I guess, my, my question is, is that are you wanting them out? That, those people out?
I want them to be accountable.
Absolutely, okay, but, but.
I want them to communicate.
But what I haven't heard is that if they missed the deadline, what, what happened?
So that was my question, and X, what happens then? What do we do then? Well, they, they're delinquent, so, I mean, we don't even give them a deadline at this point. And they know they're delinquent because they were told that over a month ago. But there's been no communication, no response. I want to be accountable and communicate, and I know they were trying to get it supposedly back together, but that hasn't happened either. Nobody's doing anything, and everything's just sitting over there doing whatever it's doing.
I like.
And that's not good either, fermenting, gathering rodents, creating a fire hazard, I mean, it's just a situation. I want to be accountable and communicate and be productive and help the community, that's what my desired outcome is.
And they are not serving open twice a month at all now?
No. They're not.
Reaching.
Oh, as, as you, as you said, they're going to reach out, and they haven't responded. So, you know, they were talking about that thing when we had the roundtable, so I wonder if that one fell through.
Well, I know that the one lady who's family sort of started the food bank, um, sort of stepped away from the whole thing. And I have never heard, we've never heard that they were supposed to be rebuilding their board. Nobody ever got back to us about that. There's no communication, there's no response to communication. Nothing's happening over here, nothing.
And we do have volunteer organizations in town that are really hard.
Yes, that are willing to.
I feel we're wasting that space right now.
They're willing to, to help the community, and they need a place to do it, and this is not productive. It's no longer working, it's broken.
Just like Kathy said, the, the two times a month that they are open, it's already been for two hours each time. How much stuff can you get rid of in two hours when you need to, when you're getting two pickup loads a week? And you're not even getting that, a pickup load away in two hours.
Well, and.
You won't have the customers, the customers, people quit coming.
And while the city is not really responsible for the food bank or responsible for the building, it still is frustrating, and if they're delinquent, they're not following their contract.
So as a citizen, aren't you guys at a point of saying enough is enough?
So I think, I think we're going to get them a letter, and maybe in that letter, you can let them know it's on the agenda for the next council meeting, and if they don't have their documentation in order by then.
Well, so the owners are.
They're already delinquent, they already, they already breached the contract. So is there something you guys can do tonight to?
I would think we have to, is this officially formally notifying them that they're in breach of contract?
But I would like for them to sign for it this time. I don't know that that happened last time. This time they need to.
Yeah, I think it was just.
This time they need to sign for it. Not that I think that's going to make a huge difference, and then could we also get a copy of the contract again, add to our stuff?
Yes.
Please, can you just upload it next time, and then, yeah, put that on the agenda, and we'll have to make some sort of forward movement, I think. Um, Jamie, have you thought about that?
Yeah, I think they should be notified. I think to me, it's whether we're responsible for them or not, it's a PR thing for the city. If you, you have a facility that's being used, that's supposed to help people, and nobody's helping, I think that's.
Carol?
It, it feels like from what I'm hearing, that besides the delinquency of the contract, yeah, the big problem is the lack of available services to the people in the community that need it. So it feels like there's really a two prompting, even if that contract comes through, signed in bright red with a purple ribbon around it, nothing, something would have to be done regarding their actual execution of the service that they signed up.
And I, I made a comment to the district guy that was here in our roundtable. I made a comment, take over about two, three, two or three wheelchair loads over to the senior center and put free on. Most of that stuff will be gone in a heartbeat when they leave, because if we are getting more and more people at the senior center, take it over and give it away to them, or we're not getting enough customers. I said, well, then, if you're not getting enough customers here, take it over there, so, you know, hop, skip, and jump to the senior center, take over, pick up load or whatever, and just say, here, take what you want. He thought it was a great idea.
They can't do that.
Quite.
Because the way they're given the food, they have very specific requirements on, you have to show up, you need to show your residence, make sure that you live in here.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we get stacked.
It's federal and state.
Yes, and it was federal.
Federal required more than state, but it sounds like they're trying to take more from the state. Now, we, you know, yes, we just rent that place out for a dollar a year, but we can still have stipulations on a minimum service schedule. And that's kind of was my intention when this contract was renewed. So if they're in breach, we could just terminate the contract right now and write the new contract and say, you know.
Well, you guys.
Twice a week.
You know, we did that for him, and he could accept it or not, so. Kind of same thing.
Did you have?
I do have, uh, just something I'd like to, uh, let you guys know, uh, from, I'm the treasurer at the Presbyterian Church. Our church supports did use to support the food bank with a cash donation every month. As a treasurer, it's, instead of sending it to the bank, their post office bar, I took it to the Timberland Bank and asked them to deposit it directly into the food bank account, because it would take as much as three months for those checks to clear. And so what I'm saying is, when you send that certified or registered letter to them, if you're expecting to get it back quickly signed, you may not get that. You may want to hand deliver it, just a thought.
Okay.
I don't think you can deliver it, it's got to be.
Yeah.
We need documentation that they receive that process. I don't need them to do anything, was that when they checked their mail and they get their certified letter and sign it. Then all, then we know that they got the information in the letter, regardless of whether they opened it up or not, I guess, I don't know.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think they checked their mail.
Oh.
Or months at a time.
They have a separate box.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
We can have the PD do it, because, like, when we do nuisance letters, there are some people that won't pick up the mail because they know what it.
They can ignore it for quite a time.
He delivers it, states who delivered to, what it is.
Okay.
And then they have to sign that they actually received it, not like a certified letter. So we did it that way.
That sounds great.
Let's do that then, if everybody agrees to that, I mean, we, we need to make some kind of formal whatever, that we're just in, okay. Let's do that then, because, I mean, I, I understand that we could just terminate it and move forward, but I would like to at least give them the letter, and like Mrs. Birch.
Carol.
Carol said, I, I mean, you know, we could do this, and they could fill out their forms and become, um, current in there, is it a five oh three, see, they could become current again, but then nothing may change. So, I mean, that would be, you know.
And then you have to settle yourself with another period of time.
Yes, we have. So, I mean, does anyone have any thoughts about that?
With the food rotting, we get all the smell in here.
Nobody has any other thoughts about that then? Still in agreeance that we send another letter? You seem like you're deep in that. I was just asking, still in agreeance that we send another letter, or?
Yes, but what Devin said about.
Having somebody deliver it and.
Okay, anything else? Anybody?
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion, we adjourn.
I said.
Moving in second, any discussion? Let's vote on it, all is prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you adjourn, thank you.